I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, June 20th, 2024, to order. Villages, please take the role.
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui? Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Miratato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek? Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Executive session, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Open Meeting Act 5, LNI compiled statute 120 oblique 2c2. Is there a motion to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussion, collective negotiating matter between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Open Meeting Act 5, ILCS 120 oblique 2c2? Any motion for Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee, Trustee Pat, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
This meeting is recessed to executive session. I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. We now move on to petitions and communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Join the Glendale Heights Police Department for a movie night with a cop held at Safety Town. On Fridays, July 19th and September 13th, starting at dusk, we will be showing family-friendly movies along with fun interactions with Glendale Heights finest. Join us on Friday, July 19th as we watch Kung Fu Panda, sponsored by the Glen Side Public Library and Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights. For more information, please contact Tanya McCo at 630-909-5459. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, August 3rd at the Lyndon Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or contact your district trustee. Thank you.
Trustee Light.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new police officers. Applications are due by Thursday, August 15th. Join a team of hard-working individuals who have dedicated their careers to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to the community-oriented policing. Applications are available at Village Hall or can be downloaded from the village website at www.glendalehighs.org/hr. There is a mandatory orientation and written exam on Saturday, August 17th. For more information, please visit www.glendalehighs.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Commission at 630-909-5398. The village of Glendale Heights has many years of history dating back to our founding date on July 13th, 1959. The village invites everyone to attend our open house at the Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to learn all about the rich history of our community. The Historic House is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. We will be partnering with the Glen Side Public Library to host an ice cream social along with tours, crafts, and many more. For more information, please contact myself, Trustee Michael Light, at 630-909-5308, or Jessica at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Clerk Jess, please.
Join the village of Glendale Heights team. We are now hiring for a variety of seasonal, part-time, and full-time positions in various departments throughout the village. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glendalehighs.org. Thank you.
Trustee Miratato.
Summer is here and the GH2O Aquatic Center is now open for the season. Stop by and learn about swim lessons, private pool rentals, memberships, and more. Come relax in a pool dive in the deep wall or hang ten on the floor right here. Regular season hours on Monday through Friday from noon to 7:00 p.m. and Saturday and Sunday and holidays from noon to 5:00 p.m. For more information, contact the Sports Hall at 630-260-6060. Take your summer fun to the next level by attending the Glendale Heights Fest. Glendale Heights Fest is Thursday, July 11th through Sunday, July 14th at Cameron Park. Enjoy thrilling counter rides, exciting entertainment, and a wide variety of food. Be sure to come out on Sunday, July 14th, to one of the best fireworks shows around. Like us on Facebook page to stay up to date with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest or visit www.glendalehighsfest.com for more information. Thank you.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
Concert in the Park. Get your janting shoes on for our Concert in the Park series. Join us on Wednesday, June 26th for Anthems, July 17th for the White Saddle Band, July 24th for Strung Out, July 31st for Smoking Guns. All concerts are at Cameron Park from 6:30 to 8:30. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-260-6060. Also, the new village stickers are now available to purchase. The new vehicle stickers must be displayed by 12:00 a.m. July 1st, 2024, on the lower right-hand corner of your windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with a V plate are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weight. The village is now offering a non-expiring forever vehicle stickers for senior citizens aged 62 or better. One free forever vehicle sticker is issued per qualifying household. For more information regarding village stickers, call 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of July as Spark and Recreation Month. If there are no objection, I will sign this proclamation. None, so is already signed. Next is D, public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? None? You have the concert agenda before you. Board Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint, please read the concert agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of June 6, 2024. Two, approval of committee the whole meeting minutes of June 6, 2024. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of June 20, 2024 in the amount of $2,524,353.65. Four, an ordinance to amend section 7-7-1 entitled Definitions of Chapter 7, entitled Parking Regulations of Title VII, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, an ordinance to amend section 7-7-6 entitled Commercial Vehicle Parking of Chapter 7, entitled Parking Regulations of Title VII, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, an ordinance to amend section 7-3-7-3D-2 entitled Violations or Offenses, subject to empowerment of Article D entitled Empowerment of Vehicles Used in Commission of Offenses of Chapter 3 entitled Enforcement of Regulations of Title VII, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights. Seven, resolution of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois adopting Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Amendments. Eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number 1 for the 2024 MFT Street Program in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Nine, a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number 2 for the 2024 MFT Street Program in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Ten, a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order 3 for the 2024 MFT Street Program in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number 1 for the 2024 Sanitary Sewer CIPP lining various locations project in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Twelve, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional design engineering services for the generator design for the Public Works Building Project. Thirteen, a resolution to approve an application for an outdoor pyrotechnic display permit for 2024 Glendale Heights Fest. Fourteen, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective party agreement with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council representing Local 52. Fifteen, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Contract between Microsystems Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights for Document Imaging Services. Sixteen, a motion to approve pay request number nine to Trotter Associates for the Mill Pond Lift Station improvements, total amount not to exceed $272,700. Seventeen, a motion to approve pay request number one to Schroeder and Schroeder Incorporated for the 2024 Sidewalk Removal Replacement Program, total amount not to exceed $192,903,74. Eighteen is approval of consent item.
Is there a motion to approve the concert agenda? Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Schroeder.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The concert agenda is approved. F, old business, there's none. G, new business. Number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business, item 2 through 4 and 6. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business, item 2 to 4 and 6? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business, item 2 to 4 and 6, is approved. Number two, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 1 entitled General License and Permit Provisions of Title 4, entitled Business and License Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-46. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-46? Pat.
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-46 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 10, entitled Commercial Districts, of Title 11, entitled Zoning of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This ordinance is 2024-47. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-47? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-47 is approved. Number four, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant eat-in and carry-out, serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 1581 Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Just Jackpots Gaming Cafe, from the June 6, 2024 COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-48. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-48? Trustee Schroeder?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-48 is approved. Number five, presentation or presentation is same thing, Urban Forestry Management Plan, Mr. Keith Knott.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, for the opportunity to speak today on the village's Urban Forestry Management Plan. Normally, presentation of this type would be given by Chuck Dombrowski, the village arborist, but unfortunately, he fell ill and won't be able to do it. So I'm going to do my best pretending to be Chuck and make sure that I get through this. Also present today is Vince Casada, who is the Division Manager of Parks and Facilities. It is the work of Chuck and Vince that we have gotten where we are with the urban forestry plan. And this will all come up in the next item, which is the last part, which is the ordinance that we're asking you to approve for the tree ordinance. So I'm just going to show you really quick. This is the Urban Forestry Management Plan. You have it in your packet. We'll be posting this after everything gets approved tonight so everybody in the community can see it as well. But the Urban Forestry Management Plan came out of the village getting an award of $25,000 for a grant that was administered by the Morton Arboretum in 2023. Grant funding was provided by the United States Department of Agriculture/Forestry Service through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Urban and Community Forestry Program, and administered by the Morton Arboretum. Grant funding was to be used for three items. A village-wide tree inventory for Parkway Park and other village-owned properties, an updated Urban Forestry Management Plan, and the creation and passage of a new tree ordinance. First, the tree inventory. First, the tree inventory was done in that all the trees in those specified areas were identified by location, by species, by size, by condition, and if any maintenance needed to be done on those trees. After the information is gathered, the plan then was to be put together. And the Urban Forestry Management Plan, mission statement I'm going to read, is it shall be the mission of the Urban Forest Management Plan to outline goals, budgets, and arboricultural best management practices for the management of the urban forests in the village of Glendale Heights. To increase canopy cover, maximize the benefits trees provide while minimizing costs, mitigate against climate change, and create a program to manage the urban forest resource for the greatest public good in a manner that is both financially and programmatically sustainable while maintaining flexibility for future adaptive management. What does the Urban Forestry Management Plan include? It includes a number of items that are listed on the screen, talking about the different trends of species diversity, ecosystems. But it does more than that. It also looks at what we have currently and how we're going to deal with that for the next 20 years. That's what this plan is to lay out. Our urban forest, at a glance, there's a whole bunch of statistics that I'm not going to read all of them, but we have 7,412 trees that were looked at in this inventory. And of that, we have 112 different species, which is quite good diversity for a municipal tree population. We have 34% of the village's tree population is some type of maple tree. And the overall condition of the population is average, which is good for a community of the size that we are. So when we talk about things that are a part of it, we talked about the trees and what we have a lot of. So our biggest tree is the silver maple. We have 1,122 of those, and that's about 15% of those. One of the big things that this plan does is it looks at what we have too much of so that an issue like the emerald ash borer, taking out the ash trees, doesn't happen again. So one of the things that we went through is that there are species that we're going to be looking to not put into our urban forest over the next 20 years, specifically a lot of the different types of maples. But there are other trees that are more native to this area that we can plant and replace those that we have low numbers of. So on the right-hand category, you'll see some of those trees that we'll be looking to put into our urban forest. And as I said, on the left side, we'll be looking to take away some of those. The summary of the Urban Forestry Management Plan is that by creating this urban forest plan, the village has taken an important step in investing in the forest's future by creating both shorter and longer-term goals that will serve as milestones. And with community and village board support, the village will be equipped to tackle tree situations that arise in the future and prepared us for these situations. The reason why I asked to do this presentation here was that the last step of the grant and of the process is to pass a new tree ordinance. The village has a tree ordinance that's on the books. The proposal that you will see as the next item does the following things, and this is what we're asking for you to approve. It amends Chapter 5, entitled Trees and Vegetation, of Title 8, entitled Public Ways and Property in the Village Code. It adopts the Urban Forestry Management Plan as a guide for public trees. It delegates the authority and responsibility for managing public trees and establishes practices governing the planting and care of trees on public property within the village. It creates a tree board consisting of myself, the Division Manager of Parks and Facilities, and the village arborist that will study, investigate, and administer the urban forestry plan. And one of the things that this tree board will do as well is, as everybody knows, I always come up and do an Arbor Day presentation. As a part of that presentation in the future, we'll be giving an update to the Urban Forestry Management Plan. We'll have any updates that we need to, if there's something out there we need to do differently. Already this year, you as the board put more money into planting trees because that was one of the things that was a part of the plan that we were putting together, is that the village needs, it has a number of spaces that still need trees to be put in. We still have a number of places that the ash tree hasn't been replaced, and we're trying to get some of those back into the mix so that we have more trees in the community. This ordinance also defines the process for contractors to plant in public right-of-bays, what they need to do to protect trees as they work, and what can happen if they don't. And that all trees planted on village property shall be planted, pruned, and cared for in accordance with the standards for planting, pruning, and maintenance the American National Standards Institute has set forth. So as I said, thank you for the time to present today. I am happy to take any questions. I'm not sure that I can answer them all. There's a lot of pages to this. But I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Number six, an ordinance to amend Chapter 5, entitled Trees and Vegetations, of Title 8, entitled Public Ways and Property of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-49. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-49? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Trustee Pat?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-49 is approved. Number seven, a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for July 3rd, 2024, and July 18, 2024, including contract pay requests to be ratified on August 1st, 2024. Is there a motion to authorize the finance director to process account payable and pay requests for July 3rd, 2024, and July 18, 2024, including contract pay requests to be ratified on August 1st, 2024? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Our discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for July 3, 2024, and July 18, 2024, including contract pay requests to be ratified on August 1st, 2024, is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Please state your name and...
George Ferrara, resident Glendale Heights. I'd like to propose some new business. We need an ordinance forcing property owners to maintain the vegetation on their property. I have the neighbor's bushes coming through my fence. His trees are overhanging my yard. I've been paying to trim his trees for years. I'm tired of doing that now.
George, I'm happy to help you after the meeting, if you like. We have code enforcement over here. We have code enforcement ordinances that we can use. So I'll circle up with you after the meeting, if that's all right.
All right, fine.
My, if you can give little brief briefing to public, so this is a common problem, you know?
Certainly. So the property maintenance code requires your shrubbery, your trees are kept in good order, that they're not creating nuisance for others. Sometimes these things do happen. They grow over trees. I think George is experiencing it. We always like to encourage a good neighbor policy, which is, if possible, communicate, talk with your neighbors, see if there's something that you guys can do to mutually resolve it. But when the situation becomes unresolved or it's excessive, then certainly we have tools available to us to make sure that we can resolve those conditions. So if there are any questions about that, if anyone has that sort of similar experience, please contact the Community Development Department.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I was Esther Wilk. I was wondering if I could talk about May 31st. It wasn't on the agenda. Can I talk about that?
Yeah, yeah.
It was or was not?
Huh?
It was not on the agenda?
I don't think so.
It's up to the board.
All right, thank you. Okay, I got home from a two-week vacation in Texas on May 31st at 8:00 at night. At 9:00, I got a phone call saying that at the dedication to Memorial Day was with all these protesters. I mean, we are celebrating and honor all the men and women who have died to keep us safe and sound. And I don't understand why a protest, they live here too, and they want to be safe and sound, so I don't understand what all this protesting is about. I mean, do they think that when we watch them protest that we're saying, "Oh, my God, we like those people so much"? No. No, it's not happening anyway. They're making us all dislike them. So I feel bad that they're even doing it because they look like they're nice people. So, but I just think that we all want to be safe and sound. I don't understand what all this is about. Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just want to follow up one more thing.
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marietta Britt. On the tree maintenance, there was an issue with the tree in my neighbor's yard. They came out, looked at it, and nothing has been done. The landlord of that home wants me to trim it so that he can then trim his tree. It won't cost him that much. Now my garden has all been shaded out. So I just want to make sure that when, if there is, if there are policies that they get followed through, and then the neighbor gets an update as to what's going on because I have no idea, and this has been going on for quite a while.
Certainly. I think we do a very good job. I think we do a very good job of trying to execute and follow up. I'll be honest, I'm not familiar with your specific circumstance. So before I overextend myself, I'll suggest that I'll look into it and circle back. If that's all right.
All right, it's the same property. All right, it's the same property that we've been talking about.
The same one, not their issues?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me look into it.
Anybody else from public? None? Is there a, anyone, okay, this is none, okay, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light? Yeah, ma'am, you can come over here.
This is just the first meeting. If there's another, there's another section.
There's other, you know, COW.
There's another CO, there's a COW meeting. Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Patrick Zachary. I'm two oh four three Audubon. I just had a question pertaining to the grant program that we just heard about with the trees. I think it's excellent what they did in collecting all the species. The only question I have, sir, because I understand in your geography, you guys have these cicadas that come every seven years. My apologies, guys, I don't know. I'm learning kind of on the go. But I did do some research on it, and we found out that the cicadas, because you had mentioned you planted new trees, so you've invested city's money into doing that over the years. The cicadas, from my understanding, can cause small cracks and harm these small shrubs and potentially kill them. Has that been taken into consideration, sir, when it comes to doing your census?
I think when they plant the trees, all that goes into consideration. I think that we do our best to make sure that that doesn't occur and follow up. We have not planted any new trees in the last few months during the cicada time. So all the trees that we put in, I think the last trees we put in were early April. Am I correct, Vincent?
Yeah, and you're correct on that, but.
You're, you're correct on that statement, but it's, it's just two certain species. So the selective hybrids that we plant in the parkways, those are not selective. You are correct, but just do a little more research and you'll find some of our urban forestry trees or more of our salt tolerant trees that we put in our parkways are really not susceptible to that. But you are true on that, but it's just, it's a very few species that can get the cracks. And it's usually from one and a half inch under a DPH.
Okay, God bless you, sir. Thank you for the education, sir.
Anyone else from public? Okay, I need motion to adjourn. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder? Roll call vote, please.
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
This motion, this meeting is adjourned. Our trustee Pat, you have the committee of the whole.
I'd like to call, I'd like to call the committee on a meeting of Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four to order. Jazz, can you know who's present?
So noted.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Glendale Heights Club, there's no report. Historical House?
Real quick, housekeeping note. Were we doing additions to anything other? I know it comes up later. We're just going to bring it up later. I know in the past, we would always bring it up ahead of time, but we'll just fall under other, correct?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Okay, we can do it on, we do it later. Okay, no, that's fine, later is perfect.
Okay, we'll move it down. Ordnance Committee?
None.
Well, I'm historical.
Excuse me.
Mike's listening.
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I'll go, okay. All right, I just want to remind everybody, Saturday, June twenty-second, ten a.m., twelve p.m. is our open house for the historical house. Come on out, a little bit of ice cream, a little bit of history. Always goes well together. And then our meeting will be Monday, the twenty-fourth, at six thirty p.m. to discuss what took place that day and what we're doing for the future. That's all I got.
Ordnance Committee?
Uh, no report.
Parks and Parks Committee, no report. Flopping Enchantment Committee?
No report.
Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
Yes, I do have some sort of a report. On July the first, on a Monday afternoon at two o'clock, the senior center is having a coffee for those who participated in the New Orleans trip. So if you are one of those people, we really wanted to invite you to come and share your experiences coming to a vacation with the senior center. And that's on July first at two p.m. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, we'll move on to discussion regarding, number one is a new Board Docs agenda platform. Doug, can you give us an update?
Yes, so David has on the screen what is going to be for the public, the new Board Docs site. Board Docs is now going to be called Diligent Community. It's the software that's replacing Board Docs. We subscribe, we've been subscribing to Board Docs for the last fifteen years. This is the new software that they presented us for the future. If you look at the main screen there, scroll down a little bit, David, you'll see that you'll have a much better interface, and this interface will, will actually work really well on tablets and cell phones and computers. So it'll be much easier for anybody with a smartphone to navigate through the Board Docs website from the public side of the village's webpage. If you, if you look on the right side, they have a recent meeting. If you click on today's meeting, click on that, you'll see that it's a much easier to read, scroll down, please, much easier to read agenda. And when you click on one of the highlighted agenda items, it comes up. Go back, David. You can also click on a split screen, and you can view the agenda, you can view the agenda, and then whatever item you want to read will also come up. So you can split screen it. Go back, please. Go to single page. That one down, the button down below. There you go. So you'll see on here, a. Go back to the home screen. So on the home screen, right, there's some new features that this software has that our old software didn't have. And one of them is a request to speak button. So you can get a request to speak in two different ways. But here at the homepage, request to speak, tells you a little bit of the rules, click on that, and it brings you to contact information. So one of the questions that I have for the board today is if this request to speak button is something that you want active on the website. What it's going to do is, once somebody enters their contact information in the topic, whether it's a board agenda item or a COW item, we'll be able to create a list for the elected official running the meeting, chairing the meeting, and you'll be able to look at a list and call out people to come up in a more orderly fashion than just casually coming up to the podium to speak. It's not going to prevent anybody who wants to speak from speaking because anybody can speak at the meeting on any topic they wish to, whether it's a agenda item or not a agenda item. But it will allow for a more orderly way of calling people up to speak. Because certainly, there's times where people think of something while they're here and they haven't registered. We're not going to prevent anybody from speaking, but it will allow those who want to speak to be first and to have their contact information, and then the board chair can call them up. Go back, David. And that, this information will come to administration, and village administration will print out all the contact information and present it to the chairperson of the meeting. Also, if you click on the, an agenda, the village board today's meeting, and click on an agenda item. Now, go back up, I'm sorry. There's a request to speak. Now, click on an agenda item.
It's probably because the request to speak is, the deadline, timeline's passed.
Oh, okay. So on this page, there's also a request to speak button, but since we're already active in the meeting, it probably isn't there. But on that page, there's also a request to speak button. Go back. The other question that I have on this site that we don't have on our current site is also, go to the homepage. No, this homepage, we're just rolling on. Is Glendale Heights TV? And right now, we use Zoom to broadcast our meetings. Everybody knows Zoom is complicated. It creates a lot of, I was going to say issues, but it creates a lot of time for our staff to let people into the meetings. We don't, we don't have, our policy is not to allow conversations through Zoom since COVID is over. So people are just viewing our live broadcast of our village board meetings through Zoom. It can be done much better through our YouTube TV page. And we can live feed right to YouTube TV, and people will be able to have a much better visual of the broadcast on YouTube TV live. So I'm asking the board if we can livestream on YouTube TV, the village's webpage for YouTube, as opposed to Zoom. Is that something the board would be interested in?
Yeah, it's a lot easier. All the way around, it's a lot easier.
Yes.
All right, can we get, Mr. Schmidt, what do you think?
Good to find with me.
Trustee Light?
Yeah, I like the idea all the way around.
Trustee Schroeder?
Just checking it out now.
I'm sorry.
She's on line.
I do.
Are you in agreement with?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move things in August to YouTube TV.
I, I do have a question for you. Not Zoom, in other words, they can't communicate. So all they can do is join the meeting, watch the meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
We don't allow that on Zoom now, right? So ever since, but we did, you know, ever since COVID was over, we don't allow interaction between us and the board, or Zoom and the board. But we still have the ability, if something comes up in the future, to go back to Zoom. But for the purposes of non-pandemic times, it would be better for us to YouTube, to use our YouTube page.
Okay, so this is a goal. Before I move on, I did forget any add-ons?
Well, that's where we could, yes.
Do you want to have an add-on?
Yes, just our projects.
So I, I, one more thing on this homepage, right? Scroll down, David. There's also a subscribe button. So here, anyone can subscribe to any of the meetings that the village has and posts that are, you know, attended by board members. So here, they enter their name or email address. They can click on whatever meetings they want to be notified of, and they'll automatically get a notification that, when the meeting is posted. So one more feature that we, that this software will have that we don't have in the current software.
Okay, so when, when, when can we put this in effect?
Uh, well, we don't have any board meeting in July. This will be in effect for August. August first, board meeting. The, we're still working a little bit of the bugs out on the site that the village board will use, the backend of all that. So we're still working some of the bugs out on that, but you'll find a much simpler process as well. And all the information from our prior board meetings rolls over into this new software. So once we get all that figured out, we'll get with each of you to show you how the new software works and a new password, and a new password for you, a new sign-on, and then we'll show you everything.
Okay, sounds good. Trustee Light?
Yeah.
Are you in, on the other?
Oh, yeah.
Your add-on?
Uh, my projects. I know one isn't here, but Keith, Community Garden. Where are we at?
Community Garden broke ground, I think, today. So we've got our first thirteen dugout. We're a little behind. We had to do some permitting, which we got, and we're running behind due to some projects since we're doing it in-house. But we're hoping to continue on in that path and over the next couple of weeks, finish it up. It should not take a long time.
All right. Who's actually overseeing the project itself as far as the construction portion of it?
It's a combination of people. I've got somebody from the park side. Matt Cruz got the park side, and I think it's Mike, it's Mike who's got the public work side.
So they communicate well with each other, correct?
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up that. And as we broke ground, we're starting on there, and it should be soon then. Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to public comment. Public comment's going to be up to three minutes. Is anyone in the public that'd like to address this board?
I think we have some.
Uh, one at a time?
I get to go first because I'm here first. Ken Darlin, ten fifty-three Greenbrier. Mr. Keith?
Yes.
I would like to take that twenty-five thousand dollars and put a troll somewhere because the Morton Arboretum gave us that money. Let's put a big troll somewhere. Secondly, I would like to know what you're doing with the soccer field. I know, it's only going to take thirty days once it's been approved. Do you want me to go over to DuPage County and see why we have no permit?
I would.
Because I will.
I do, I'm hoping that that will not be necessary. So we got notified last Monday that we should have a response within ten days, which is today. So I expect a response tomorrow from the county letting me know that I'm approved. If not, I have to do more work and it'll be longer. But I believe I will be approved.
Okay.
Keep your fingers crossed.
So then thirty days from tomorrow, I mean, I'm even going to give you a couple extra days, but thirty days, that thing's going to be up and working.
So you're going to have to give us a little bit more than that, I have a feeling, just because we're going to run into some fest issues within that thirty days that is going to preclude us from. So I'm working with the chief because there's going to be some stuff that we have to do along with that. But I would hope that by the latest, the middle of August, we got something going on, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Farzine Haranani. A lot of people have actually asked me within the last few weeks why I come here when I don't actually live in Glendale Heights and I live in Palatine. And my answer is that I care about Glendale Heights for the same reason I care about Palestine. I care about any other place in this that I believe all people should have the ability to live in dignity, no matter their background. So I wanted to actually read out a bit of a letter that I received from the Attorney General. So background, on April eighth, April ninth, and April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Public Access Bureau received requests for review from Mr. Beg, Ms. Chazet, Ms. Haranani, and Ms. Olson alleging that the board violated the Open Meetings Act by restricting Ms. Olson's public comment on April fourteen, April fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting and adjourning the meeting without allowing additional public comments for those who wish to address the board. Section two point zero six G of the OMA provides that any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the public body. This provision requires that all public bodies subject to the act provide an opportunity for members of the public to address public officials at open meetings. In response to this office, the board stated that Ms. Olson was asked to focus her public comments to an appropriate topic when she began speaking about the current conflict in Gaza because the topic did not relate to an agenda item or other village business. The board acknowledged, however, that resolutions calling for a ceasefire or peaceful resolution of the conflict of the conflict appeared on agendas for board's March 21st, 2024, April 18th, 2024, and May 2nd, 2024 meetings. The board argued that restricting the content of public comments to agenda items is a reasonable and permissible restriction, arguing that some courts have designated this type of forum where public comment is confined to agenda items as a limited public forum, which is subject to the same scrutiny as non-public forums, i.e. reasonableness and viewpoint neutrality. So during regular meetings, the Open Meetings Act does not preclude members of a public body from considering items not specifically set forth on the agenda, as long as the public body does not take final action on items not listed in the agenda. So I'm going to skip over to the end real quick. The board argued that its meetings are not the proper venue to address world issues, but resolutions appeared on the board's March 21st meeting agenda as well as the agendas for two regular meetings that immediately follow the April 4th meeting. Under these circumstances, Ms. Olson was not attempting to comment on random international affairs unrelated to village business when she was prohibited from speaking about the Gaza conflict at April 4th, 2024 meeting. Therefore, the board violated Section 2.06G of the Open Meetings Act by restricting Ms. Olson's comment and ending its meeting before Ms. Olson and other members of the public had an opportunity to address the board.
Excuse me, your three minutes is up.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll take two minutes. I would like to know, when the village did the work on the Mill Pond extension, was there any consideration to the other side of the railroad tracks behind Seans Park? There's a wetland there that looks like it connects to all of that streams and everything and actually continues back to with all the construction that's going on behind our subdivision. It looks like some of the areas are collecting water and now there's, looks like water or wetland plants growing there. So I didn't know if there was continuation of wetland area back there, but we might need to take a look at that.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? With the real set shady, please stand up. Sorry, I'm sitting on my seat. And what I want to talk about here is the Leahy Act. One of the things that we've realized in this process of going through the ceasefire resolution is most cities, Naperville in particular I'll speak about, are heavily invested in weapons manufacturers and those weapons manufacturers are providing weapons to Israel that are being used in Gaza. So what the Leahy Act, I hope that you guys actually talked to the lawyer about the Leahy Act because what the Leahy Act shows is that we are in violation of American law when we provide weapons that are used in war crimes, that are used against crimes against humanity. There is one exception, and the exception is that when this is pointed out to that party, Israel, which the ICJ did point this out to them, the ICC has also pointed this out in their arrest warrants. So when this is the case, what ends up happening is we are in violation of American law, not international law, American law, when we provide weapons in the circumstance. When this is adjudicated, this doesn't protect local city boards from the impact of this law. This is an American law. It's not international court law. The Leahy Act, named after Patrick Leahy, Senator from Vermont, because he was the signer of this, is an American law. So what I want to look at, when we have COD that's invested in violation of American law, they're invested in weapons manufacturers that are committing acts of war crimes by their weapons are being used in that manner, they're in violation of American law. So when this is, when the ceasefire happens, which it will happen because every war does come to an end, there will be a litigation of what happened here and the war crimes will be something that is litigated. And when it is litigated, the same way that when South African apartheid was litigated, the people that aided in any weaponry or war crimes, they were a part of all of those lawsuits, all of that litigation. So I think that one thing that I request from all of you is can we get your investment portfolio? Can you please make that public? I don't want to do a FOIA request. I would rather ask you guys politely to give us your investment portfolio. I'd like to see, is Glendale Heights, is the retirement pension fund, is that invested in these weapons manufacturers in violation of the Leahy Act? And also, are you guys just generally invested expecting a return on investment from weapons manufacturers? So I make this request.
The short answer is no. So. The police pension fund is invested through the state, not through us.
So can we get your investment portfolio? Because this is actually something that is available, that should be made available to the public. So.
I don't think he was understanding. We don't have an investment portfolio, it's with the state of Illinois. For pensions.
Yeah, but you're incorrect because every city actually does invest and they have an investment portfolio because they have to grow their investments in order to maintain a pension. So like that, so Doug knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but the Val State Police Pension Fund is transferred to one general fund.
Understood, but we would like to comb through it and we would like to see your investment portfolio. That's my request. That's fine, but I would like to get your investment portfolio so we can see how Glendale Heights has invested. I would rather not do a FOIA request out of respect for you because I know that that bogs things down.
No, respectfully, I would request you to do a FOIA.
Really? Okay, so.
It's the right way to do it.
We can go that route, but I would rather.
No, it's nothing personal, it's just the right way to do it. You're requesting documents from the village. We need to do that through FOIA.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, but I definitely want to see that. Yeah, we're going back and forth.
I know, I know, but three minutes is up. Thank you.
My name is George Farrar, resident of Glendale Heights. First of all, I want to commend the board for their patience in listening to the same rhetoric, meeting after meeting. I respect all religions. I have been to the mosque open house. I've learned a little bit about Islam. I know Muslims are an asset to a community. I see the good they're doing to the Islamic circle of North America. However, the Palestinian organization Hamas is pure evil. I don't have to recount their atrocities, we all know them. They harm Palestinians more than Israelis. They use resources to build tunnels and amass arms instead of helping Palestinians. They have been doing the same thing for 75 years. They build a war machine, they attack Israel, they lose, they keep doing the same thing over and over again, they expect a different result. That's idiocy. That's the definition of it. Hamas doesn't want peace, they want to eliminate Jews from the river to the sea. The Hamas leader, Hanyah, Israel Hanyah, stated civilian casualties work in Hamas's favor by garnering world sympathy and turning the world against Israel. Palestinians rejected offers to have their own state five times. First rejection was 1937. The British offered the Arabs 80% of the disputed territory and Jews 20%. Jews accepted, Arabs refused, from the river to the sea. Second rejection, 1947. Jews accepted offer, Arabs refused and launched an all-out war, which Israel won and they started a new nation. Third rejection, 1967. Arabs sought to destroy the Jewish state with the Six-Day War, which Israel won. The Arab League met in Sudan and issued its famous three noes. No peace with Israel, no recognition of Israel, no negotiations with Israel. Again, a two-state solution was dismissed by the Arabs, from the river to the sea. Fourth rejection, 2000. Israel Prime Minister Barak offered a two-state solution that Nasser Arafat rejected. The Palestinians then launched the bloody wave of the suicide bombings that killed over 1,000 Israelis and bamed thousands warm on buses, wedding halls, pizza parlor, from the river to the sea. Fifth rejection, 2008. Israel Prime Minister Foud Omar added more land to the deal than Barak had offered. Mohammed Abbas rejected the offer, again, from the river to the sea. Hamas is harming the Palestinian people with their river-to-the-sea philosophy and must be neutralized. When are the Palestinians going to wake up and do something about Hamas?
All right, thank you.
Ed Boeck, Wayne Avenue. Sorry, Mikey.
I'm sleeping, sorry.
Mine has nothing to do with any of this stuff, but I brought some examples, which I'll show to the board or if anyone wants to see them afterwards. But I think it's kind of disrespectful that, and I've not talked to him about this, but that Peter has to run the clock. It's way out of his pay grade and it's really not his job. So I looked at what a lot of the other villages do and in City Chicago, and they all have timers that they put up for the public to see. So I think it's being even more fair for us as well because we only get three minutes and, you know, you're reading your thing and next thing you know, you're out of time. So I'd like the board to consider getting a timer that we can see so Peter doesn't have to sit there on his phone, which I'm sure he doesn't mind, but it's not your job, Pete. And that it would make it more convenient for us in the crowd so that we know that we're running out of time so we can get our points across. So I printed out some examples for you. There's also one that you could put, like if you brought in a screen for behind you, it comes, it's free, there's an app where you can have it for free or you can actually buy your own. They start at 29 bucks up, excuse me, up to like $150, so if anybody would like to see them after the meeting.
Why don't you give that to Doug?
Give it to Doug? Sure.
Yeah, let Doug take a look at it.
These are just, again, these are just some basic examples. But if we could see, I think it would make for everyone, whatever side you're on, it would just make it easier because all of a sudden you're out of time and you haven't finished getting your point across. So it would give us more time to say, oh, I got 20 seconds left, I forgot to hit this high point. And again, Peter, we're not to sit there on his phone like right now.
Keep on telling.
Keep going, Ed, you got 12 seconds.
I just hear a little buzz.
Yeah, get him off the stage. Anyway, please consider it, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Keith Larson. I have a speech prepared, but first I just want to say that Hamas was founded in 1987, not 1937, and Israel has funded Hamas. But anyway, I've been coming here for quite a while, asking you to pass a ceasefire resolution, which would cost you nothing and does not pick sides, as you can see with other ceasefire resolutions passed in nearby municipalities that condemn both the October 7th attacks and the ongoing genocide our country is collaborating in knowingly. But some people on the board do not want to listen and in some cases even refuse to read our proposed resolutions. On one occasion, we were not even allowed to speak and the meeting was cut short, denying the opportunity for others to speak. This was a direct violation of the Open Meetings Act, which the Illinois Attorney General has recently confirmed. For some reason, this board doesn't seem to listen to the people, doesn't seem to like to listen to the people they represent. Certain people here seem to be rabidly opposed to denouncing genocide, which saddens me, but does not surprise me, given the racist hate speech that I see coming from some of these people. But shockingly, some people are similarly opposed to the idea of financial transparency, which I think is a very reasonable and a very reasonable thing that any common person should support. Do you really want to work 40 hours a week and have taxes taken out of your paycheck while getting no information about what those dollars are spent on? I know I don't. I, okay, I don't have a problem with paying taxes when I know those tax dollars are keeping the roads I drive on in working order and when I know those tax dollars are helping to educate the next generation. But I also know that a significant portion of my tax dollars are being used to destroy schools and to burn refugees alive. But this is Glendale Heights and I know this board does not control federal taxes, but this board does control local taxes and spend those tax dollars. Municipalities around the nation spend tax dollars on many different things, some necessary and others not as necessary. Local governments invest money in corporations, such as through the purchase of corporate bonds, allowing them to profit on interest on these bonds. Each of us has the right to boycott corporations that don't align with our own personal values, but without transparency, how do we know if our tax dollars are being invested in corporations that do not represent the community's interests and values? I do not think Glendale Heights supports the murder of children, but I know that many municipalities invest in companies that directly profit from the murder of children, such as weapons manufacturers like Lockheed Martin and Boeing, to name a couple. The US is the world's top weapons manufacturer and US-made weapons are being used to murder children in many places across the world, including in brutal massacres in Gaza. I do not know if Glendale Heights invest in corporations like these and that is why transparency is so important. Even if you do not care about our complicity in genocide, there are plenty of more local reasons why financial transparency should be important. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to go through this again and again?
Hi, my name is Sierra Hall and I want to read you a direct quote from the Times of Israel, February 19th, 2024. Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu said specifically that he has resisted an attempt to force upon us the unilateral establishment of a Palestinian state. We flat out reject this. So it's a false narrative that Israel is ready and happy and willing to have a Palestinian state established. Everyone knows that I am one for decades who blocked the establishment of a Palestinian state that would endanger us. He said his stance has only been strengthened following the October 7th massacre and a Palestinian state would be an unprecedented reward to terrorism. So the Prime Minister of Israel, excuse me, I'm talking, excuse, excuse me.
Miss, ma'am?
The Prime Minister of Israel has.
Miss.
And is, yes, sir.
Face the board, don't be facing the audience.
The Prime Minister of Israel has rejected.
If you're going to be funny about it, I can have you escort it up.
You want me to talk to Kwame?
Well, no, just say what you have to say and don't look at the audience. Talk, speak to the board.
Is that in the Open Meetings Act?
Why, I'm letting you speak.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, I'm trying to talk, sir. If you'd let me speak, I'd love to speak.
Well, go ahead, I'm just talking to the board.
I'm talking to the board, sir. You can hear me.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. So anyway, the Times of Israel directly quotes that Israel has pushed back hard against international pressure for progress on a Palestinian state and the Prime Minister of Israel has directly refused, it's disrespectful for you to talk while I'm talking, by the way, to establish a Palestinian state. Thank you and have a wonderful day, Pat.
Thank you.
Good evening. Haven't been here in a few months, Mr. Epstein, Glendale Heights, Illinois. First of all, there's been two people up here that have spoken twice, which I believe was against the rules with regards to that. And one rattled on about history that had nothing to do with.
Two different meetings, so you are incorrect.
Well, originally it was one time a day. When did it change to two meetings now?
It's always been once a meeting.
Well, you deny people. Denying also the right to speak up here. Let's go back to the last election. Mr. Merritt Toto denied me from speaking. Cut me off, cut the meeting off. So don't, you know, why you don't like me is because I challenged your petitions and things like that. There was a lot wrong with it. So in my opinion, you are all racist bigots up here and everything like that. Now, a lot of people think I'm Jewish because of my last name. I'm not Jewish. So, you know, I have no side with either side or anything like that. Now, we also have a couple of police officers, seemingly became, one was a murderer and one was a thief, but we have a police commission that hires these people and it's probably the same one that hired both of them or promoted both of them. So we need to look at reviewing the police commission and who's on it. Because there sure is, because one of the questions I was asked is what my political affiliation was during my interview. That is totally wrong.
Another justice. Do you know we fund an entire country in the Middle East? They don't work, they have a full bank account, they travel freely, pay no taxes, receive free education anywhere in the world, enjoy free healthcare and endless resources. They also advocate for killing children, I'm sorry, yeah, children too, Christians who follow Jesus Christ claiming the right to do so without any repercussions from their own government. No, this is not Saudi Arabia or Iran, this is Israel, also known as occupied Palestine. As you support Israel, let me shed some more light to you. If you were to go to Israel, the country that you all pay for today to seek to live there, they would scream in your face to go back to your country and tell you to, and let you leave your bunny and the people that could fight their battles and for them to defend themselves. This is not an attack on my beloved brothers and sisters of the Jewish faith who know their faith has been hijacked. This is a direct critique to the Zionist political movement. On June 17th, the House passed a bill to automatically draft men ages 18 to 24 into the army. Why? I'm guessing the Zionists inside the House intend to send their children overseas to continue their genocidal and political...
continue their genocidal and political agenda. They would rather kill off our children than their own, how about that? Anyways, apart from Trustee Schroder and Siddiqui, the rest of you have denied access to the people wanting to say what to say in their own village finances. You expect us to trust you blindly? I'm sorry, but you let hate speech slide, you silenced me and ignored me, you have sent clear message that you're okay with letting another country manipulate us, take our money, and endanger our healthy and beautiful American children. This doesn't show me a stable mindset for capable, a stable mindset for making sound financial judgments on behalf of my family. For reference, Lincolnwood and Glendale Heights both have 9K in annual taxes, while Glendale Heights' average home is 262K, Lincolnwood is 492, and Lincolnwood has an amazing school district, while yet ours is still being challenged to even have proper training for the teachers after what happened, I don't know, a couple months ago with the girl with the hijab. And us, we actually just funded a baseball field with only one bidder, why didn't we have more than one bidder for the baseball field? I don't know, because we have no say for it. So I'm asking you guys to have another financial committee placed on the agenda, because we need to have our voices heard in our finances. $9,000 per year, there's nothing to show for, while others are boasting in their education, their infrastructure, their bridges, they're listening to their constituents, you guys consistently ignore us, you guys only listen to Jim Sullivan's family, who just came here. By the way, if my family all came here, they would take over this whole room. I could do that too, but I don't, because I'm not going to play that card. So just because they showed up here doesn't mean that they represent the entire village. We also are a part of this village, and you guys need to listen to us as well. We need more transparency, and we need the committee on the agenda next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Saad, and I have been a resident of this village for 15 years. As people have been discussing, there should be financial transparency of how the village funds are spent. Additionally, we should have the right to speak on any subject we find important, which you have denied us of, which is a worrying trend around America on this subject in particular. I want our funds to be used on our interests, not spent on the interests of foreign lobbyists like AIPAC and the Adelsons. American villages have the potential to change America as a whole, a fact this board denies. If you're going to sit there and act like your position is meaningless, you shouldn't have the position at all. The only people that can honestly say they put America first are the ones that say, we need a second American revolution away from the state of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hey, I'm Angel. I now understand why the No Child Left Behind Act was incorporated, given the misinformation I've heard tonight. As I reflect on Juneteenth, a national holiday, a holiday deeply significant to my community, I'm reminded of the true essence of freedom for my people. This day marks the end of a long and painful journey towards liberation, yet it also compels me to consider the continued marginalization that we face, both in the past and present. This same marginalization is evident not only here in America, but also in places like Palestine, Congo, and Sudan. Just earlier, Esther highlighted the sacrifices made by soldiers, asserting that they fought for our lives, and it is undeniable that many soldiers have bravely protected us. However, it is equally important to acknowledge that in pursuit of American interests, our military has also caused harm in other countries, contributing to suffering in marginalized communities worldwide. Our understanding of history and current events must be thorough and informed to truly grasp the struggles of these communities. Juneteenth serves as a reminder of the battles our ancestors fought for freedom, a fight that is far from over. Recently, an individual here at one of these meetings suggested that those who are unhappy should go back where they came from. The statement was hurtful and very ignorant, particularly for those of us whose ancestors were forcibly brought here. Similarly, Palestinians, if given the choice, would likely return to their homes if they weren't under constant threat of violence and genocide. We are all aware of the alarming rise in Islamophobia, leading to violence and fear within our communities. This hatred individual are palpable, even in the confines of this council chamber. The impact of these global conflicts reverberates locally, affecting our residents deeply and contributing to the fractures in our community. This is why we need your support now more than ever. We must pass a ceasefire resolution that is not symbolic, but substantive, substantive and meaningful. Such a resolution would stand as a testament to our commitment to peace, justice, and the well-being of all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more others?
Hi, my name is Binish. I stand before you as a concerned citizen who has deep ties to Glendale Heights, a community that I believe has the potential to thrive when all voices are heard and respected. A few months ago, some of us were called out for not attending board meetings in the past. We were told that our absence meant we had no right to voice our concerns. Well, we hear, we heard you, and we showed up. We came to these meetings with the hope that our presence and our voices would finally make a difference. But instead of being heard, we've been met with disrespect and even racist remarks from board members and certain residents. It's disheartening and infuriating to feel unheard in the place so many people call home. We want to work together to make Glendale Heights a better place for everyone, regardless of race or background. Yet the lack of financial transparency in our local government has raised, raises serious concerns. Why is there such defensiveness when we request transparency? What is being hidden from the very people who live, work, and contribute to this community? We as residents and community members deserve to know how our tax dollars are being spent. We deserve to understand the decisions that are being made on our behalf. Transparency should be the standard, not something we have to fight for. And most importantly, we deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. The defensiveness we face only fuels our determination to dig deeper and demand accountability. Recently, Adil Salam made a comment saying, "If you don't like it here, leave," and they accepted us. Who are they? And who are they to accept us? Let me be clear, we do not need anyone's permission to exist in this world, especially not in Glendale Heights. We belong here just as much as anyone else. Who are they to tell us if our voices matter? We are not guests in this community, we are integral part of this society. Moreover, the remark that white people accepted us is not only patronizing, but also completely misses the point. We are not seeking acceptance, we are demanding equality. Our right to be here is not up for debate, and our voices deserve to be heard and respected. We bring valuable perspectives and contributions that enrich our community. Glendale Heights can be a shining example of what a diverse, inclusive community looks like, but that can only happen if the voices of all constituents are heard and valued. We are not here to create division, we are here to see unity and progress. We are here because we care deeply about our community. To the board members and residents who have shown us disrespect, we will not be silenced. We will continue to attend these meetings, continue to voice our concerns, and continue to fight for a Glendale Heights that listens to and respects all its residents.
Three minutes is up. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Monica Morrow. As I said before, I'm human, I'm parent. I'd like to touch on respect. I'm not here to preach, I just like to share my personal experience. Respect is foundation of every solid community, it's foundation of every solid family. I, I think that we all agree that we teach our children to be respectful, and the best way to do it is to lead by example. I think that there were attempts to silence, to interrupt, to mock, somebody was laughing at things that are not to be laughed at, because we are all adults here. I'd just like to say, I'm a single parent, the best compliment that I got from my children was on Father's Day, and I'm a heterosexual woman, always was, always will be, and my children came to me and they said, "Happy Father's Day, Mom." I was like, boy, you must be kidding. They acknowledge that I have to be tough sometimes as a, as a fair dad, and sometimes I can be soft and, you know, cuddly and providing as mom. What it means is that when I make a mistake, and I do, because I'm a human, I have to apologize for it. I think if somebody silences and violates somebody else's rights, it's the right thing to do, to acknowledge that and to apologize publicly. If, let's say, Ms. Olson was silenced here by somebody who is here to make sure that all the laws are followed, I think that it would be really nice if that person would be wise and courageous enough to publicly apologize to Ms. Olson. I think it would be also nice if this board can set a consequence, so this situation will not happen ever again. This is how it works at our house, and it sucked. When I had to apologize to my own kids, I was not too proud of myself. I was yelling at them for whatever, and then I came, hey, what you did was wrong, but by my yelling at you, I was wrong too, so I want to apologize. What happened? I had to take my pride, I had to, being a lawmaker, order maker of the House, I had to take my crown of my queen-ness down, apologize, and then guess what happened? They took that crown, and they put it back on my hat, because they showed respect. They were like, Mom, cool, pretty good job. So I think it takes really a lot of courage, and I'm very proud to see young people who showed wisdom and courage to speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I need, I need motion to adjourn.
That's enough.
Josie Schmidt.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second by the mayor. Go call.
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
All right.